Give the invocation, alright. Alright, we're now called to see the city council's special budget meeting to order for July twenty fourth. Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance invocation given by Deputy Mayor Jim Bernard.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Maybe seated. Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember McGuire here. Councilmember McCure here. Councilmember Taylor here. Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Here.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Item number four fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four draft water and sewer fund discussion Ms. Schaefer.
Yes, and I need to add an item.
Okay.
If I could, um, we need to discuss the proposed millage rate that goes out on the trim notice. Um, we have to have that to the Department of Revenue by the Fourth of August.
Okay.
So that'll be the rate that goes on the trim notice. Um, and of course it can go down, but it can't go up.
Right.
So we just have to decide on what we want to do.
You want to do that during this meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You want to do it first?
Yes, please.
Alright, go ahead.
Okay, so this slide, this is a new slide that is, um, that I created, uh, that's not in the packet that you have. So our ad valorem tax, I've done, um, four different scenarios. So five mills is what the budget is based on right now. The current mill is the four point three six eight one. The rollback rate is four point oh five oh four, which would give us the same revenue as last year. And then if we were to break even, we would have to, um, have seven point two three mills. So we, you want to aim high on this, um, proposed millage rate because you can always bring it down, but you can't bring it up.
Okay, I guess the question of the council was, do you see any inkling to raise the millage beyond what the budget is based off of five mills?
I personally feel that, um, I always like to go high too. So there's no reason why you can't go high.
Right.
But at the same time, I think that, um, with our, our revenue increasing as well as our, our investments, I'd be happy with a maximum of five. If somebody wants to go a little bit higher, that's fine with me because like you said, we can always go down.
Okay, just to be clear, Melody, the, at five, which the budget is based off of, you already have all the extra interests and all the extra quote unquote, investment revenue.
Yes.
Already factored into that.
Correct.
So even at five mills, we're still taking a considerable amount from reserves, right?
Eight hundred and seventy-five thousand from return on investment, which would be, um, from water sewer fund.
Okay, oh. Okay.
I have a question for Melanie. Melanie, maybe you can explain my first time. Why is it that it can be reduced, but it, you know, it can't go, can't be increased?
It's a, a law, the state of Florida, the state of Florida put in place that once that trim notice goes out to the residents,
Uh-huh.
you can lower that, but you can't raise it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And we'll decide the final at our, um, tentative and final budget hearings.
I'd like to make another comment then, Mary, if you don't mind. I, I think that, um, one, one of the reasons I, uh, when I've ever sat at a board and I've been several boards in my life, uh, and like, you know, a lot of homos associations and that, a lot of people never show up unless there's something really major important. And, uh, just for example, one time it was a major run. So I turned around and I was the president of the board. So I put on the agenda that we were going to put those, uh, those strips throughout the roads throughout the community, those bumper strips. So yeah, we had like ninety-nine percent of people showed up. And then of course, the first thing I told them, we canceled that. We're not going to do that. But at least we got them to show up. So I'm thinking, and this is just my opinion for the moment. If maybe to grab people's attention, so they can give an opportunity to come in in the next month or two to express their opinion. Why don't we just go with six percent? Because then we got plenty of room to go down. Maybe people will look at six percent and say, hey, well, that's, you know, I want to come in and say something about that. So with that being said, I'll make a motion every Saturday at six percent.
Okay, this point of clarification would be six mills.
Six mills, I'm sorry.
Percent. So we have a motion at six mills. Does anyone care to second that motion? Again, this is for the notice, not setting the actual millage. We do, we need a second in order to continue with the discussion.
Sebring, what is Sebring's?
We, we, we need a second in order to continue.
Oh, I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a second. So your question is, go ahead with your question.
Oh, I was just curious what the other county or the other cities are at Sebring and Lake Placid.
Yeah, they're at five point something. I can look it up here just for a second.
I think the county is planning on increasing seventeen percent on their budget.
Yeah, it springs into like eight mills, I want to say, somewhere in that neighborhood. I think Sebring, just off the top of my head, I think it was about five point eight.
Five point eight one, yeah.
And then, uh, Lake Placid has lowered theirs.
Yeah, they're three point.
Yep.
Three point one five and the county's eight point one.
Yeah. There you go.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm fine. Nobody wants a second and they want to come up.
Oh, it's, it's already been seconded.
Oh, I'm fine if nobody wants to vote, nevermind.
I think that Jim is right as far as getting people's attention. I can assure you that this will definitely get people's attention. Question is, how much of a glutton for punishment do we want to be? And people are going to be marching through the door all pissed off and are they going to be marching through the door with open ears? I guess is the question. Um, but I mean, regardless, I think that the, uh, the budget was built off of five, so that that is a likely, um, outcome. But, you know, it doesn't necessarily matter that much other than just simply getting people's attention. And you may have more people that come, um, that are irritated and you, but then again, you may have more people that come just because they want to find out. So it'll definitely have more people here regardless.
And just for the record, I don't plan on voting for six percent. I mean, not on this motion, but talking about
Yep, we're only setting the trim notice, not the actual millage. Any other comments, questions?
So let me make sure I get this right. You said it for six because you just want them to come. That's it.
Well, because we got to set it. I prefer to set it above what it is now. So, so I always believe in setting it high because that way people see it's high and then we turn around and come down. Then one, it's easier on us and also makes people a lot easier to accept it. And so if we went with five percent, we're still taking out what eight hundred thousand? Is that what it was, Melody?
Almost nine.
Like that?
Yeah, almost nine.
If you want to try to, and I, I don't mind taking some money that we might have extra, but, uh, it's, it's, it's just a point. I mean, it's just an opinion. It's like, if we go six, we may go down to what we got now, four and three quarters or whatever. But it's just, it's not going to hurt anything. It may get, it may not get nobody's attention. I mean, I originally, I was going to say five, but basically then five, we were going to have a shortfall. So I just said, well, let's do six. And more than likely will come down closer to five or less. So that's my opinion. You can have your own opinions and you can vote your own way. And then we'll see that if nobody wants the sixth, then we ask for somebody else to come up with another one. And we'll still have whatever we think is the highest we will go.
Yep, and go ahead.
So my question on this board here, is anybody thinking of six? As of right now, I'm just asking.
I mean, before we hear all the information, my inkling is to go with five, which is what the budget is based off of. But again, you know, things probably will change.
Yeah, we're just.
A little bit as we go through the discussion of the next couple of meetings. So
Okay.
There's usually always a few things that we either want to add or take away or what have you. But to be clear, the seven point two and some change up there is how much you'd have to raise it to not take anything, uh, from.
Correct, and that's just operating. These numbers do not include capital. We've not discussed capital yet.
Okay.
So then the motion that was put forward by Jim will only be to put the six percent on the trim. That's not, that's just to get.
Just what goes out on the notice, yep.
That doesn't do what we're going to vote on.
We'll set the final millage in two meetings?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
After we've gone through all the budget hearings, um, and decided what we want in the budget, then we will set final millage.
And this information goes to the Department of Revenue?
The Department of Revenue and the, uh, Tax Collector's Office.
Yeah, to be mailed out to every single resident available.
Correct. Okay.
And so we're trying to generate a response from the residents.
Well, it's just an idea, yes.
But, but that's the ultimate.
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure I got it.
Yeah, that's a good question. I mean, that's what, that's my opinion. I can say that, uh,
Okay.
I really don't think any of us are going to go for six, but, uh, that's my opinion. At the moment, it could change.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further comments, questions?
No.
Seeing none, cause please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now we go to item number four.
And we'll see what happens.
So our wastewater water and wastewater fund budget is based on, um, no increase in water and wastewater rates. The last increase in water rates was two thousand and eight. Wastewater was two thousand and seven and garbage was two thousand and fifteen. There's no cost of living adjustment. Uh, the return on investment, depending on what our mills is, could be as high as one point three million. Our net income is one million, five hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. And we have four vacant positions right now as C and D tech, two, uh, dual license operators and the public works director. Our revenues for the water wastewater fund are, come in at six million, two hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred dollars. And your percentage wastewater is forty-five percent revenue and water is fifty-five percent. And our water wastewater fund revenues are six million, two hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred, which is an increase of five hundred and fifty-seven thousand.
I have a question on this one.
Mm-hmm.
The, is the new addition that they just put in, um, Twin Lakes Point, I think it's called, is that, is that figured into this or is that too soon?
It's too soon.
Okay.
Because they're going to phase that in. So once we, once they start phasing it in, we'll start adding the revenue.
Okay.
It'll look real good next year.
So our water revenues are budgeted at three million, four hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred dollars. Water revenue, oops, sorry. Water revenue is two million, two hundred and eighty thousand, which is an increase of fifty-five thousand. Irrigation revenue is budgeted at seventy-two thousand, which is the same as last year. Sebring Ridge is budgeted at three hundred thousand. It's an increase of ten thousand.
Can you explain, please? I'm sure there's an easy, easy reason there somewhere.
Explain why the ten thousand increase? It's based on usage. So right now, year to date, at the end of, um, June, there was two hundred and twenty-six thousand in revenue. Um, so I just budgeted, you know, projected it out through the end of the year based on monthly usage.
So we use more than we projected so far this year. So we're, so great answer. Thank you.
You're welcome. Crystal Lake revenue is budgeted at seventy-five thousand, which is the same as last year. Lake Damon revenue is budgeted at seventy-five, which is a five thousand dollar increase. Connection fee is budgeted at ninety thousand, which is a ten thousand dollar in decrease. Hydra and sprinkler revenue is budgeted at twelve thousand, which is an increase of two thousand. Water tapping fees are budgeted at thirty-two thousand, nine hundred. Water impact fees are budgeted at seventy-six thousand, which is an increase of sixteen thousand. The water interest is budgeted at four hundred thousand, five hundred dollars. That's due directly to the, um, interest. The new bank account. Miscellaneous revenues are budgeted at ten thousand, which is an increase of one thousand, five hundred. Wastewater revenues are budgeted at two million, eight hundred, fifty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. And the sewer revenue is budgeted at one point eight million, which is an increase of a hundred and twenty thousand over last year. Septage revenue is budgeted at six hundred and eighty thousand, which is a decrease of twenty-eight thousand. Crystal Lake Sewer is budgeted at one hundred and forty thousand. It's an increase of two thousand. Lake Damon revenue sewer revenue is budgeted at forty thousand. It's an increase of four thousand. Penalties are budgeted at one hundred and forty-five thousand, which is the same as last year. Sewer tapping fees are budgeted at five thousand, which is an increase of thirty-five hundred. Sewer impact fees are budgeted at forty thousand, which is the same as last year. Um, in two thousand nineteen, twenty, we had New Core came on. That's why that's so much. And then right now, year to date, this year, we're at four hundred and sixty thousand, but that's because of the laundromat.
Because of what?
The laundromat.
Oh, okay.
Miscellaneous income is budgeted at seven thousand, five hundred, which is an increase of two thousand, five hundred. That's the end of revenues. Do you have any questions?
This is the fund that the, um, return on investment will be coming from, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So in there, you have, uh, six hundred and five thousand proposed going to return on investment. Is that above and beyond the eight hundred and some odd thousand that we're taking out of there or?
No, so the return on investment, the expense will be, um, directly related to what the general fund needs.
Okay.
But again, that'll depend on what mill we, you, you know, we decide on, but I don't, I don't think I understood your question.
As of right now, you're looking at this fund basically having a surplus of six hundred and five thousand dollars?
No, it's going to have a surplus of.
And I'm going to talk about what's already in reserves. I'm talking about this year alone.
Yeah, it's going to be one point, one point five.
One point five four four in the S and M?
Okay.
Alright.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. So the water wastewater fund expend, expenses are budgeted at four million, seven hundred, thirty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars. And this slide just shows your, um, the graph of how my water will be fifty-two percent, your biggest expense in that department. Utility billing services are budgeted at four hundred, forty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars, which is an increase of six hundred and forty, sixty thousand, four hundred dollars. And then the next couple of slides shows each line item, what the differences are. If you all want to discuss anything in there.
I have a question, Melanie. The executive salary, how many personnels is included in an executive salary?
There's six people that are allocated in the executive salaries from, um, city manager. So it's city manager, um, city clerk, HR director, finance director, IT. I think that's it.
Public Works Director.
Public Works Director.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Go ahead.
Okay. Wastewater Services is budgeted at one million, four hundred, eighteen thousand, twenty dollars. It's an increase of a hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. Again, um, the next couple of slides shows each line item. If you have any questions about that.
This is be a question for, for Mark. Do we have anything on the horizon, um, that would? Any new business ventures or change in sludge hauling or anything along those lines of new revenue streams, uh, that are proposed? Or is this pretty much what we're going to stick with for the next few years?
I would say no, but if Joseph wants to add anything on the sludge.
Uh, cur- currently we're working, uh, with the finance department. We're trying to come up with some hard numbers on what we are earning, what we are, uh, losing, if you will. We're trying to save some money here and there, but right now everything's kind of where it's at. So I, I would think going into this next year, probably going to be about the same.
Okay.
And then spend the time next year trying to save where we can.
What are you saying? We're, isn't it like seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars?
For sludge.
For sludge, but that looks good, but what are we spending? So we're trying to figure out, which isn't the easiest thing to do. Melody's got Danielle and somebody else herself working out, trying to figure out whether it's how much we're making out of that seven hundred and twenty.
Yeah, but the reason why I asked the question, I remember the, during the, it might've been Jerry bringing it up, but basically there was some new grant funds that were available for going to, uh, was a level two or a stage two type of, um, sewer plant that would basically be able to take care of that sludge. But I guess the economy of scale, we would essentially have to be teaming up with Sebring and Lake Placid as well to get more sludge inbound. I, it was just a prod to maybe look into that a little bit further and, uh, see if we can do something over the next couple of years.
Well, we've got, they're working on a grant for the whole upgrade of the wastewater treatment plan of nineteen million dollars. We're
Right.
Get our fingers crossed on that.
Would, would that include the, uh, sludge as well? Or is that just simply the typical?
There would be, there would be areas of the process that would be upgraded. More holding tanks, um, new drying bed.
Okay.
So maybe a new de-racking machine or something of that sorts.
Got it.
There are some upgrades that will come with them.
Understood. Thank you.
Um, I just have a question, the, from Melanie, the trans postage. What is, what is that?
So that's anything that, uh, it's transportation and postage. So
Oh.
Anything that is shipped to us is charged there and also a, a big portion of that is the utility bills when they're mailed out. There's the postage on that. And that's allocated throughout each department.
That wouldn't fall under the utility billing services?
It gets, it gets allocated.
Oh, okay, okay.
Between, um, utility billing and water wastewater sanitation.
Gotcha. I gotcha.
Yep.
Lot of stamps.
Yep.
Yeah.
Lots of money.
Any other questions?
Do you ever at times put out a flyer with or on the bill saying, and you know, asking people if they'd rather get their bill electronically?
No, but we are, you, as you guys are aware, going with BSNA software and we're also going with a new, um, well, you, it'll be, come before you guys at the next council meeting probably, but a new, um, where you can pay your, your bill online. It's called invoice cloud, you know, over the phone, credit card. And they have, um, an incentive to, when you click to pay your bill, it'll say, do you want to sign up for paperless billing? Do you want to get your, they do it by text. So you can pay, you get the text, you can pay your bill by text. So and it will also send out reminders to people when their, their bill is late, which we don't do now.
Yeah.
That'll probably eliminate a lot of the, the cutoffs that happen. You know, if you get a, a notice three days before cutoff, chances are you're going to pay before it gets disconnected. Yeah, less revenue, true.
Yeah. Less revenue, but less employee expense as well.
Yes. And his, the, um, gentleman, Matt, that we're working with, with invoice cloud says that his, um, average of increased, uh, paperless billing is three hundred percent.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Do you know what our current percentage of, uh, paperless billing versus paper?
We have Savitri had the number. I want to say it's somewhere like fifteen percent.
Oh.
Paperless, yeah.
If you triple that, that's a big deal.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright.
But Mark, real quick, that nineteen million dollar grant that you were talking about for the wastewater treatment is, would that pay for the entire thing? Or would we still have a shortfall that we would have to make up?
No, they would pay for it. Remember we had that special meeting? That's the one, yeah.
But it would pay for the entire amount?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a hundred percent fun, not a, not a match.
Awesome.
Correct. Any other questions?
Okay.
Seeing none, please proceed.
Okay. Water services are budgeted at two million, seven hundred, fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. It's a decrease of a hundred and thirty-six thousand. And that's going to be related to, um, other contractual services. We had a diversified equipment, I think, that they, um, took care of our dumpsters, did welding on the dumpsters and we're not doing that anymore. So that, that decreased by forty-eight thousand.
It was cheaper to buy new ones.
Yeah.
We're buying new ones. I agree.
And inventory items we had in there budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand. We decreased that to a hundred and fifty. And water meters were decreased by a hundred thousand.
Any idea how much we actually spent on water meters last year?
Can tell you.
Or is that how you arrived at the four hundred thousand, I'm guessing?
Yeah, I don't, I'm, I can't, I don't remember how much we actually spent, but we did quite a bit, but I think with, um, in discussions with Joseph, it really wasn't realistic to put them to install all those meters.
Yeah.
Um, the water services, well, yeah, the water service, uh, the advertising. What, what's, what's advertising for water services?
That would be any advertising for, uh, employment positions or?
Oh, oh, I get, okay, okay, got it.
Work center expansion, expenses are budgeted at one hundred, forty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars. An increase of twenty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty. And that's directly related to property insurance. And that's the end of the water wastewater.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead with sanitation fund.
Yep. Sorry, I got to get there. Sorry, I gotta get there.
I don't know if all of you know who's, Joseph is?
No, I was waiting on it, somebody introduce him.
I told Melody to do it. Joseph Leva is our utilities manager. And I wish I had five more like him, if not ten, he's done a great job, especially without a, public works director, he's taken on a lot to the point, maybe he can't handle it, but he never complains, gets things done, couldn't ask for a better man in the position, he did this job over at Sun and Lakes, he's also a dual operator. So the, his operators can't fool him out there, he knows what they're doing, but uh, he's uh, honestly, I couldn't ask for a better person in this, in this position, I think the whole staff agrees with that. It's great to work with.
Yep, what I've seen from Joey, um, doing a great job, so.
Thank you, Mark.
Very happy to have you, he's the, the, the new Rick, if you will, so, but maybe with a better attitude.
Well, yep, well, when Rick moved up to public works director, but Rick really was this job for years here and other places, so, Yep, but yeah, so, pretty much, yes, there was an in-between, but um, basically, he's running the whole water wastewater right now.
You just need to find four or five buddies to come with you, see.
I've got a few, um, thank you, Mark, and thank you, Council, appreciate everything, and thank you for the opportunity.
Good to have you.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Very good.
You have a good day.
Thanks, you too.
Okay, sanitation fund is uh, budgeted on no increase in sanitation rates, which um, we are in the process of looking into that, um, that really needs to probably happen sooner than later.
We have to have a study in order to make any changes there, or is that something we do internal?
We do it internal, and we've gathered a lot of information on it. Um, one thing that we're having difficulty nailing down is how do you charge for a dumpster? So I contacted um, city of Sebring, and they said that um, it was in place when they got there, so they're not sure how they, how they determined, but our rates are substantially lower than the city of Sebring. So, something we need to, we need to look at, so.
Okay, I mean, couldn't you calculate how large your dumpster is and how much it costs to dump X amount of cubic feet and, do it that way?
So the, the um, tipping fee, um, is separate, so that, that is based on what is actually dumped, so it's the actual size of the dumpster.
I see.
You know, your monthly rate.
Okay. So is that something that you're gonna bring back for this budget year, or is that next year?
Uh, probably next year, maybe in the middle of the year.
Okay.
You know, maybe we can start working on it a little bit harder and,
I, I think it would, just as a manner of speaking, it would, it would probably be a lot easier to handle a lot of these rate changes throughout the year. That way, we can have longer discussions and understand fully before we get to budget time.
Yep. So our sanitation fund revenues come in at one million six hundred thirty three thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. It's an increase of one hundred and fifty five thousand three hundred and thirty. Garbage is budgeted at one point, one million three hundred and five thousand, which is an increase of seventy six thousand. Crystal Lake garbage is budgeted at eighty six thousand, which is the same as last year. Tire pickup is budgeted at thirty five hundred, it's an increase of five hundred over last year.
Um, the tire pickups, that's when the garbage truck goes and picks up tires at residences? So are, is each resident allowed a certain amount of tire pickups?
I don't know the answer to that.
I do, yeah.
How many is that?
Well, once we, in fact, today, we were finalizing this flyer to get made up to go out, to go to our new ordinance, it's only four a year.
Four a year?
They get four a year.
Okay. That'd be good, cuz um, there's a house over in my neighborhood that, I don't, I don't know where they get all this, I don't know if they go out and pick up illegally, don't tires, I doubt it, but, there are always tires in front of the house, so that was just curious.
Dumpster fees are budgeted at one hundred thousand, it's an increase of fifteen thousand. And interest income is budgeted at forty two thousand, it's an increase of forty thousand five hundred. That's the end of revenues for sanitation department. Sanitation expenses are budgeted at one million nine hundred twenty one thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. It's an increase of twenty five thousand two hundred. And I was looking at this um, personnel costs decreased, so there's one employee that was entered in the sanitation department that's not correct. So I'm gonna have to come back, to that. And it's about thirty thousand, um, in regular salaries difference, so all of those will change.
Okay.
I don't think there's anything really, urgent in the operating costs. That's the end of sanitation.
Alright. Okay, any questions? Done, seeing none? Please go to the airport.
Okay, sorry about that, airport fund is budgeted, revenues are budgeted at eight hundred thousand, eight hundred thirty nine thousand four hundred, it's a decrease of about two point seven million, and that's directly related to grants.
Have anything to do with fam, should making changes to this?
No, it's grant, that was grant related, we had s- some substantial grants out there this, this year.
Okay.
Last year.
Oh, I got you, I understand that, thank you.
Um, so, airport revenue funds are budgeted at eight hundred thirty nine thousand four hundred dollars. And thirty eight percent of that is um, grants. So rents and royalties are budgeted at two hundred eighty three thousand four hundred dollars. And they include hangar rent, which is budgeted at one hundred ninety thousand six hundred dollars, that's an increase of seven thousand. Classic Kaladium is budgeted at one hundred and one thousand four hundred dollars, it's an increase of twenty one thousand four hundred. Ramp rentals remain the same at one thousand dollars. Tie-down rentals remain the same at one thousand dollars. Maintenance fees remain the same at nine thousand six hundred. And our intergovernmental revenues are budgeted at three hundred and eighteen thousand. Fuel sales are budgeted at one hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, and they include aviation fuel, which is budgeted at one hundred thousand, which is a thirty thousand dollar decrease. And jet fuel is budgeted at seventy five thousand, which is the same as last year. Miscellaneous revenues are budgeted at sixty three thousand dollars.
I have one question, and I feel, will, will there be any, a difference now that they got a actually uh, a school out there that's teaching people how to fly?
Will the fuel be different? It may, I'm not, I was, I tried to analyze why that decreased, and I'm really, it just depends on who flies in there. You know, who fuels up.
Yeah, it would, the size of the jets, I mean, you know, if you get twenty jets versus ten, that makes a huge difference.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of those big jets will take a whole friggin' truck of fuel.
Right.
I was mainly looking at the other aviation fuel.
That, that school out there is a single-engine school, right, like Cessnas and things?
Yeah, I think they have more than one plane.
Yeah, but even if they do, I mean, they only hold anywhere between ten and twenty gallons. And they fly all day on that, so.
They probably would fly around and land, right?
It's equivalent to having a, you know, a handful of guys that like to fly a lot, I mean, it's not a huge amount. Now, that other school, the international one, if they start doing jet flight out there, that's, that's a whole different thing, but.
Okay.
Property taxes are budgeted at fifty thousand, which is a ten thousand dollar increase from last year. And miscellaneous remains the same at one thousand. And our expenses are budgeted at ninety, nine hundred twenty six thousand three hundred and forty dollars. Which is a decrease of ninety five thousand. And that is directly related to the, the grant, um, this year was more expensive than what we plan on budgeting, or what we plan on spending next year in the grant. That's it for the airport fund, unless you have any questions?
Nope, anybody else?
Let us have one question on the operating cost, um, for the industrial building, the hundred and one thousand four hundred dollars, what is that for?
So that um, Mark and I had discussed, and any of the repairs that go on out there, so all of the rent that comes in from, classic Kaladium will be put right back into the building.
Okay.
Actually, it'd be, you got a roof that needs replacing, which would take three and a half years of that. Just letting you know.
The airport is in the hole.
Always.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none? Anything else?
No, sir.
Well, having said that, that concludes our city council special budget meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned. Being that our other meeting is advertised, advertised at five thirty.